Hello and welcome to the December 4th meeting of the Asheville Planning and Zoning Commission. As a reminder, public comment for our meeting is accepted by showing up in person. And public comment that we receive in person will be limited to maximum of three minutes for individuals or 10 minutes for groups' primary spokesperson. We also receive public comment in advance by submitting an email to pzcommissioners@ashvillenc.gov. And before we begin, I'd just like to take a quick moment of personal privilege and acknowledge that we're coming together again for the first time in a few months. And our community is not the same as the last time that we came together. We have a lot of work ahead as a community and it's my sincere belief that this body, the Planning and Zoning Commission, is well-equipped to participate and be a strong part in charting out our land use future. We have an array of really diverse skillsets here that I'm proud to serve on this body. And we're now joined by two new commissioners. So, welcome to Commissioners Zuyevsky and Commissioner Bell. We're excited to have you join us. The task is not the same that you signed up for, but we'll be very well-served to have your skillsets, so thank you for being here. I'm glad to see everyone and eagerly await our work ahead. So with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Wheatley if you'll be so kind as to lead us in a land acknowledgement.
As we are gathering today as the Planning and Zoning Commission, the body tasked with reviewing and advising on appropriate land use in the city of Asheville, it is fitting to acknowledge the storied history of this land. We occupy the land of the Cherokee people who have stewarded and been in a relationship with these mountains and waterways from time to memorial. This land is occupied through violence, oppression, coercion, broken treaties, and forced relocation. Please join me in expressing respect and gratitude for the present-day Eastern Band of Cherokee, the Cherokee Nation, and the United Ktua Band of Cherokee, and all of our indigenous neighbors, as well as the past and present marginalized community members as we seek to join in the healing of the indelible traumas that are embedded in this land. Thank you.
Take a roll call now.
Oh, thank you for that, Mr. Palmquist.
Sure. Chair Barton?
Present.
Vice Chair Greiner?
Present.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Sheeho.
Commissioner Bell?
Present.
Commissioner Saichel?
Present.
Commissioner Fairclough?
Present.
And Commissioner Zuyevsky?
Present.
We have a form.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda in the administrative section is the approval of minutes and the special use permit ordinance and findings of fact and conclusions of law from the September 4th, 2024 meeting. Is there anything we need to do to acknowledge the findings of fact or just include this?
Just include it in the motion.
In the motion, too. Okay. There were a couple of typos that I noted. Have those been corrected?
Yes, so we received some, Chair Barton sent some typographical corrections that are not substantive in nature, so those will be incorporated and made, but they're not changing the substance of the minutes, so.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes and the special use permit?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So next up, we have election of chair and vice chair. This would ordinarily, by our rules of procedure, have been done at an October meeting, but being this is our first meeting since Helene will conduct elections. Any guidance, Mr. Palmquist or Ms. Ashley, on this procedure for that, or do we take nominations?
So we'll handle each election of chair and vice chair separately in two different votes. So we look for a nomination for chair, for instance, and a motion for that, and then a second for that motion, and they'll take a majority vote for that, passing that. If you want to call for a nomination for chair.
I'm going to nominate Chair Barton.
I second that motion or nomination.
I will accept a nomination. Any other nominations for chair? Hearing none, do we have a vote? Or do we do a motion or a vote?
You can do a vote. You ask for a vote.
We have a vote for the Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission. Me.
So you just call for all in favor. You want us in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I will gladly serve as your chair. Do we have any nominations for the vice chair? I will nominate our current vice chair, Byron Greiner.
I'll accept.
Are there any other nominations for a vice chair?
I'd like to second that nomination.
I actually have something I'd like to say before we move forward. You know, as our, as our commission reflects on the vote for leadership, it's important to reflect on what this past year actually has meant to this board and the city of Asheville. We've seen many milestones come before this board, not the least of which was a proposal for a housing working group, which we didn't see fit to execute. We've seen the expansion of our meeting minutes from essentially nonexistent to a more detailed approach that we all found to be more equitable and allow for greater access to the challenges we face as a board and our recommendations. We've encouraged greater community engagement and have been more directly involved in this board, or this board has been more directly involved in neighborhoods, to my knowledge. We've established an ongoing and updated live update to the outcomes of the hotel overlay and kind of the outcomes of the moratorium of the hotel and, or the hotels in Asheville. We've put forward, for the first time as a Planning and Zoning Commission, we've put forward recommendations for amendments to the UDO, which include the removal of residential parking minimums, as well as changing project level thresholds from 50 units to 100,000 square feet. We've also developed a land acknowledgement and moved to amend the comprehensive plan to include a land acknowledgement. So what is the culture of our board? What are the aims for our roles in advising, in advising on land use policy? Do we perceive ourselves as proactive participants in our community or reactive advisors reliant on natural catastrophe, city staff, and city council for direction? Should we have some responsibility to review and recommend amendments to the comprehensive plan and UDO as our charter requires at the state and municipal level? In the next year, we're going to face critical issues, including anti-displacement policy, recommending amendments to the comprehensive plan, expansive use of diverse housing stock throughout our residential districts and commercial districts, reduction in exclusionary zoning practices throughout the city, upzoning commercial corridors, and focusing on transit-oriented incentivized developments. So I would ask, for some of you who are newer on this board, maybe you don't have the experience, but for others who have been here the whole time, who has led these efforts? Who have you looked to for guidance and leadership? And I'd like you to reflect on that prior to voting and ensuring that the next year of our commission looks the way that you'd like it to look.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Wheatley. It is appropriate to reflect back and, you know, celebrate, I think, what are some improvements to the way that this commission has functioned. As a reminder, you know, self-nomination is allowed. Am I hearing a self-nomination, or would anybody else like to make a nomination for a vice chair before we proceed with the vote? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the nomination of Vice Chair Greiner to continue serving as vice chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So that vote passes and we now have a chair and a vice chair. Next up on our agenda, we have a zoning text amendment. This is a request to consider proposed zoning text amendments to the UDO, Chapter 7 of the Asheville Code of Ordinances, to better align existing city floodplain regulation with the North Carolina State Building Code and the state model floodplain ordinance.
Chair, would we be opposed to flip-flopping on its four and pines?
Oh, sure.
Or does the rest of the commission want that?
Was this?
We spoke about it earlier.
Pre-meeting. I'm sure Fairclough thought it might be helpful. You said you're just going to do a set. What is the presentation we have? Would it be helpful?
It could be helpful for, this is Steph Dahl, it could be helpful for the presentation to come beforehand. I don't think it's absolutely necessary, and I would recommend that if we do go over the five or so slides in that presentation, that we save the last slide for after you vote. That's a discussion item for you all, where I will provide what's next and ask you for input about policies that you're interested in and also concerns that you might have, potential areas where you think more data is needed.
I also think it would be helpful to, to switch, and then we can leave that last slide for the end.
Sure.
Do we need a motion for that, or?
To amend the agenda?
I think that's just what it says.
You want to make the motion to?
I motion to move agenda item number five to right now, with understanding we'll come back later for the final part of that presentation after the zoning text amendment.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So we'll proceed with agenda item number five, a presentation by staff on existing floodplain regulations, building damage assessments, and recent permitting activity. Presenting on behalf of staff is our Planning and Urban Design Director, Ms. Dahl.
Steph Dahl, thank you very much, Chair. Appreciate being here tonight. I'm presenting some information that stretches across several departments' reach. There are different bailiwick's. We do have experts in the room if you have questions. There's also an opportunity for you to just reflect on this information and then save your questions for afterwards, as we mentioned that we'll go over this. We'll save some of the, the last slide for discussion later. Wanted to make sure, and I wanted to tell the public this, that you may not be able to see this at home, unfortunately. These monitors do not show up well on video. Please just go to the Planning and Zoning website on ashvillenc.gov. The meeting documents, including the agenda and any presentations, are posted there, so you can get the visuals right now and follow along. We wanted to provide you with an understanding, or provide the community with an understanding of what a flood zone is, and basically, there are two delineations that we pay the most attention to, and people often refer to them as the 100-year flood and the 500-year floodplain, which makes it sound, we were talking about this right beforehand, it makes it sound a little different than what the reality is. And what we prefer to call the 100-year floodplain is the 1% annual chance flood area. Okay? And Jason, do you want to share with people what that means over the course of 27 years? I think it's a good, I think it's a good way to look at it.
Yeah, so the way, the way we've kind of put it together in, in our firm when sharing it out with the public is that a 1% annual exceedance probability is equivalent to a 27% chance of this flood event happening during the lifetime of a, an average mortgage, a 30-year mortgage. So if you're buying a house and you're getting a 30-year mortgage, think about having a greater than 1 in 4 chance of having this storm event happening during that life, that mortgage.
So to note, you know, we're showing a graphic here that shows the French Broad River, and most people hear about the floodway, and that is the area of the path of the river, and it's really close and tight towards the river. The next area out is going to be that 1% chance area, and then you have the 0.2% annual flood chance area, which some people call the 500-year floodplain. Those are the definitions. We've put out here that there are 856 parcels that are substantially, maybe not the entire portion of the parcel, but they're substantially within that 1% annual flood chance zone, and there's 672 buildings that are larger than 500 square feet. So you've got to imagine, we do have some accessory structures here and there and all of that. So again, data matters. We want to put some caveats up there. And then if you move out further, you can add another 223 parcels and another 180 buildings. The reason why it's important for us to look at the 500-year flood extent, as people call it, is that is mostly what the extent of this past storm event, this flood, really looked like, was the 0.2 annual percent flood chance. So about 9% of Asheville's total area is in, in one of these zones. So almost 10% of, of our area is in a flood zone. It is not just along the river, and that's really important to point out as well. If you looked at a map of our flood zone areas, there are plenty of other waterways besides the Swan and the French Broad.
Is that 9% of the land area, the number of buildings, number of people?
Um, we did not drill down totally, we took the word "land" out of there on, on purpose.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely, and we haven't like, we haven't surgically done this data.
But it's generally around land, not parcels, or property value, or tax value.
The, it's basically saying, if you looked at Asheville, it's 45 square miles, about 9% of that is within a flood zone. Yep, that's what it's saying. So you hear the word "damage assessments" a lot, and we want to point out to you all that there are actually two kinds of damage assessments that the city performs. The first kind is called a building safety assessment, and the Director of our Development Services Department, Mark Matheny, is our expert on this one. The second kind is on substantial damage assessments, and we have Derek Wayne Scott back here. Derek Wayne Scott leads our charge for doing those substantial damage assessments. As you heard, he's our Stormwater Division Manager, and he acts as one of our floodplain managers. So, building safety assessments are to determine the risk of actually occupying the structure. And so when you hear about those green, yellow, and red tags, that's a building safety assessment. We do those right away after any, some, any kind of event to determine whether or not somebody can go into that building or part of that building. And in this particular case, there were over 1,600 structures that were assessed. We're talking about the entire city, not just flood zones, but 24% of them were in our flood zones. So we've gone over this part. What I wanted to also note is that we opened doors for storm permitting a week? October 7th. Okay, so I mean, it was, it was pretty quickly after Helene hit that we opened the doors for what we call repair and replace permits, which also, all the fees of those are waived. And since that date, we've had our over 1,000 applications. So that's, these numbers, we're getting live numbers, so I happen to know that right now, that's a little bit different. But as of the second, it was 1,038 applications and 919 that had been submitted. Many, many, many of those are just trade applications. The vast majority of applications that we're seeing in commercial and residential are for like electrical repairs, that type of things. But we do have that, that data broken down, and we'll be releasing that at a later point. What you might want to know is kind of the percentages or the numbers of structures that we had in overall, again, this is in the city, that were green, yellow, or red tagged. So green, again, safe, you can go in, yellow, parts of it might not be safe, red, not safe to occupy. So there's only 215 structures within the city that got red tags. Substantial damage assessments are different from building safety assessments in a lot of ways. So we'll start with just saying that they're part of the minimum requirements for us to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. It's not something we choose to do, and FEMA actually gives you an estimator tool, and it tells you exactly how those assessments must be performed at the outset for us to then kind of crunch numbers. So what the purpose of it is, is to determine if any of the structural damage that's in that 1% annual chance area meets the criteria that FEMA has given a definition for, for substantial damage. And if you have a building or a structure that has been defined as having substantial damage, you're going to have to develop in a different way than people who didn't have substantially damaged buildings have to develop. So it's when the damage caused by the event is considered equal to or greater than 50% of the value of the structure. How do we determine of the value of the structure? Generally, we are going to use whether, we're going to use information that the property owner gives us, if it is valid, or, you know, information that we can take in, like an appraisal, by a licensed appraisal, or if they don't have that, we use the taxable value plus, we use the estimator tool to help us understand a little bit. So it's a taxable value. Yep. Well, come on up, Derek. I think a lot of people have questions about this.
So Derek Wayne Scott, Stormwater Division Manager, City of Asheville, good evening. What we're comparing is the value of the building adjusted from the information we have on the property appraisers website to today's dollars, or more specifically, to September 2024 dollars. We compare that against what the FEMA's software gives us, which is, it's a program called the Substantial Damage Estimator. They came, they trained us on how to use it, and we have been crunching numbers. That's going to give us a number that we compare to the adjusted building value from the property appraisers, and if it's 50% or greater, it's considered substantially damaged. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Derek. So it's, it's not like we're just ripping it right off Bunkham County tax on the parcel data, which I think is important for people to know. We know that that might not be the actual value of the building. And the more important piece is that while our building safety assessments are just something that we do to help people and our public safety officials understand the safety of occupying that building, that's not an appealable process. This one is. This is, this really helps determine what people's processes or pathway forward for any kind of redevelopment. So these numbers are numbers that we don't actually have yet, but we're going to kind of give you an overview of what we have so far. So these numbers are actually, again, talking about the areas, the flood hazard areas and the floodplain, so they're not the same as the building safety assessment, but there were 1,050 structures that were assessed in the area. So about 40% of the structures that were assessed were residential. Remember, because you might be thinking, that sounds really weird, because I go on the river all the time and there's not a lot of residential there. Well, there's a lot of other residential in our city that are in flood hazard areas, they're just not on the river. And about 60% of what we assessed was commercial. Early estimates of what Derek and his team are seeing is that of that, about 10% of residential structures appear to be potentially going to reach that 50% or that substantial damage definition, and about 40% of the commercial structures that were assessed appear to potentially, I'm doing a lot of caveating here, to potentially reach that mark of substantial damage. These estimates are going to change. We don't have the data. It's, it's an arduous process where we look at each of these individually. Brenton?
What triggers being an assessment? Is a landowner calling for that? Is the city going around just saying, hey, that looks like it's any flood?
What triggers it is that we're required, we are required to do it for any structure that is in the flood hazard area. So after an event like this, we go out and do it. We're literally going structure to structure. We had teams, I want to say there were like at least 20 or 30 people that participated in that process, including members from all different kinds of departments under Derek's leadership. We brought Nancy Watford back on, if you remember her, to, to help with some of this as well. But, so it's not as if someone's calling us and saying, am I, you know, do I have a substantially damaged building? We're doing that to, we're doing that for everyone. It's not like a pick and choose.
In that.
Yep, yep.
So this is still ongoing? There's still more assessments happening, or is it?
The assessments are actually complete. So what's happening now is that, is that using that SDE tool to determine whether or not someone has reached that 50% mark.
And the SDE tool is the FEMA tool?
Yes.
Okay. And again, all the caveats, because this is all appealable? If someone wanted to provide an appraisal?
That's correct. Absolutely.
So what we, so there's 1,050 structures in the floodplain is what we're seeing here?
That were assessed, that's correct. And that's, I would say that, is that exactly the answer to the number of structures? It might not include certain accessory structures, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're generally through the, the on-the-ground assessment phase?
Yes.
That's extremely fast work.
Yes.
Thank you so much. That's really incredible.
Yeah, it was a.
We were all without power and water, and we were all surviving that we were able to do that while also all the other stuff in Public Works. That's pretty incredible.
I have a similar question just about the building safety assessments. So how did you identify those structures because those were not necessarily in the floodplain? We're going to have Mark Matheny come up and answer that.
Good afternoon, all. Mark Matheny, Director of Development Services. So can you repeat the question, please?
How did you identify the structures to assess for the building safety assessments?
Yeah, so we drove every street in the city. But to, to be more specific about your question, we basically did it in two phases. We basically, we did an initial phase, which we basically used, and we used the climate justice map that the city has, right? We developed a climate justice map many years ago, and so we used that to start, because what that does is that basically identifies the most vulnerable areas, and the people who may not have the immediate means to remove a tree, or to call somebody, or anything like that. So we sent our teams through the climate justice area first with radio contact, because of course, we didn't have any cell service, and that way we could call the saw teams, the fire department had chainsaw teams, the Public Works had chainsaw teams. We could identify roads that were damaged that maybe other people hadn't gotten to. So once we completed that, that was the first round, and then about a week later, we actually did the second round, and knowing that, you know, that things had calmed down, the water had receded and that sort of thing, we actually took, split the teams, right? We split the teams into the flood, special flood hazard areas, and then started again in, based on the climate justice. in, based on the, uh, climate justice mapping.
Is that something that you all can share with us, as far as the maps?
It's, we, we have the climate justice map, and we also have, so, so this follows, um, the way of doing that, and you saw the green, yellow, and red tags, that's through a standardization process called ATC 45. That's a, uh, so that all communities that suffer through this have the same way of going about it. So that's where those tags actually come from. And, um, what, the advantage of, of this current times is the technology that we have. So we used to do it on a scrap piece of, it wasn't a scrap piece of paper, it was like a three-layer carbon copy of paper. Now we can do it on an app. So we literally were out there with our phones, mapping all this in there. So that's all on a GIS layer, and we have that somewhere. Yes, it's going to be published tomorrow. Um, so there's dots. You're going to see the dots that are available, uh, the green, yellow, and red dots for all, uh, all the structures that were evaluated.
Yeah, and I, I just know, I'm thinking of at least two properties that probably weren't visibly damaged, but had flood either in the basement, or their roof, you know, so there's, they're, they're having to vacate the home. But I'm curious if potentially those were left out in the process.
Yeah, there's a very good potential of that. We, we ended up, our second, our first and second round, uh, ended up with almost the same number of structures, right? We were about 15, 50-ish, give or take a little bit. And since that time, people have come to us, whether it's the general public, or the media has brought up a couple of them, uh, or people coming to get permits, because we immediately had the permits available. People came up and said, "I didn't get a tag, but this happened, right? I had water that came through the back, uh, and I want to do that." So then we just add that to it, and we go out and actually do that assessment, so it's on the records. And then we add that, so we have a cumulative, um, record of that, uh, in the future.
Can, can you give us a sense of the most typical damage? I mean, we obviously know flood damage and tree damage, but breakdown of that for residential structures, you know, how many had severe damage from trees versus flood?
I do have that? We actually have a, we have a little dashboard on that, but I don't have it off the top of my head, and I'm not sure if I have access to it or not.
I can tell you some numbers.
Well, we also have the num, yeah, so we also have, so that's based on, on the permits that we, that have been issued and have been coming in and requested, right? So we also have the breakdown of the, um, uh, we have it broken down, commercial and residential, uh, red, yellow, and green, each one. So we do have that, I just don't have access to it right now. How do we, but I can, I can get it to you guys.
And this is now like part of that, we want to, um, to say, we, uh- We do want to get down on paper all the questions you might have, because anything, for many reasons, but for any questions that you may have, we're just going to assume that the general public also is really interested in this information. It helps us guide, um, the preparation of our communications and engagement moving forward. So, I'm going to move us along, if that's all right. Um, so that was the, um, last slide before, the what's next, which I hope that we can, um, come back to and use it as a conversation tool. But I'm going to go through this real quick and just say that City Council is having a work session on, um, next Tuesday on the 10th. It'll be 3:00 to 5:00 PM before their regular meeting, and their topic is recovery. Um, so that covers anything, and any topic regarding, um, recovery, but their vision, policy changes it might be interested in. And it is being facilitated, um, not with staff, but with a, a third-party facilitator. There is no public comment. This is a time for them to be working amongst themselves, and there's going to be a lot of time for public engagement moving forward. We just told you, we're going to be sharing some information with the public. Uh, we're going to be, um, rolling that out with council tomorrow during their agenda briefing, but we have our first iteration of a recovery dashboard. We'll be providing certain information on that, um, as it comes up and is available. Right now, the data that we have the most information on is data around, um, for example, debris collection. But we do have all of the numbers that I provided today, including a link to a map that Mark talked about, which shows, without showing actual addresses or names of people's homes, where those points of data, the red, yellow, and tags actually are in our community. So you can kind of, almost like a heat map, get a sense of where, um, we had different, um, levels of incidents. And then overlaid on that is our climate justice map, so you can, um, better understand whether or not these things happened in neighborhoods that, um, have been identified by us earlier to, uh, as, um, uh, climate justice neighborhoods. We're also developing additional floodplain development information, and that is going to be sent out to you guys by, by email at some, some point, but also will be shared on our website. In particular, I wanted to point out that we are developing a baseline report for the riverfront area, and that will, it's basically an inventory and analysis that anybody could use for additional planning, um, efforts. And so it will include a summary of a lot of past planning efforts. And I can thank Vidila Savica and David Hazard especially for working hard on that report. They have their first draft done, but it's also, um, includes some technical information, and there'll also be policy considerations in there as well. Eventually, we will have the kind of data in there that I know everybody is really looking for, but that we don't have right now, which would be, you know, like what the substantial damage estimations, um, tell us about the extent of our damage, both from like a financial impact, um, perspective, um, on buildings and structures that might be private. But also, something for people to recognize is that the, um, city and county and NC DOT have a lot of infrastructure in the area, so there was a lot of damage to, um, public infrastructure that has a cost, a price tag associated with it as well. And then for any policy considerations, we're here today to really listen. We're going to be listening really closely on Tuesday at the council work session, um, and anticipating, um, what our future process may look like. After you guys deal with today's, uh, item, which is to review that ordinance that is going to provide the foundation for all of the work that happens in the flood hazard areas moving forward. And I thank you for your time. Do you have any burning questions, or would like to move on?
I, I just have one. Going back to the first slide, I, I appreciate the, um, that data point, the 9% of Asheville's total area in the flood zone or the flood hazard area. And I would be interested to see what percentage of building footprints is in the flood hazard area. Are we more or less dense in our flood area, right? So if, if, if our building footprints is 9%, then that means we're, we're just as densifying our flood zone as we are all the other safer areas versus, is only 4% of our building footprints in the flood zone. And then that could be kind of something cool to track over time, to show, let's go ahead and densify safer areas over time, and we can see that number drop relative to each other.
I'm also curious, and wrote into staff today about the property value in those areas. I just feel like there's a puzzle, that there's a piece of this puzzle also of like, okay, if we're going to get to a point where we disincentivize building here, where will that, where, where will those people and their businesses and their homes go? How does that all work? I just, I think that the value of it is, um, just context in this, this big conversation we're starting for the whole community.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So, uh, we'll now jump back to item four on the agenda, request to consider proposed zoning text amendments to the UDO, uh, to better align existing city floodplain regulations with North Carolina State Building Code and the state model floodplain ordinance. And who from staff will be leading?
Vidal Savica. Amy D.
Hello, everybody. Vidila Savica, Planning and Urban Design. Uh, I'll start by just noting to anybody watching at home that, uh, you can't see these screens, so if you'd like to access this presentation, it's, uh, available on the Planning and Zoning's website. You can open it up and, and follow along as we go along. This was put together with the Public Works Department and with Planning and Urban Design, so I'll just start really briefly to state that most of the, uh, text amendments that we bring to you tend to have large changes. For the most part, this is really about cleaning up, uh, the flood regulations, uh, aligning them with state regulations in order, uh, to clarify and simplify, because we know that plenty of applications are going to be coming forth, and we wanted to make that process easier for the public and for our permitting staff. So that's really the, the big driver behind this. And, um, with that, I'll turn it over to the, uh, Public Works Assistant Director, Amy D.
Good evening. So, uh, we're going to start with some key takeaways just for this presentation, and specifically, we are updating Section 724, Conflict or Inconsistency with Other Laws, Covenants, or Deed Restrictions. Section 725, definitions, the, Chapter 7 definitions, um, and then Section 712-1, Flood Protection Ordinance. And these proposed updates will bring our regulations into compliance with state and federal requirements, specifically the state building code and the National Flood Insurance Program. It will better align our regulations with best practices with floodplain management, and it will help ensure that we remain in good standing with the National Flood Insurance Program and our community rating system. The updates will clarify development language to better support permit applicants and city staff in the permitting processes, process for those that want to come in and develop and rebuild in the floodplain. And ultimately, these updates will simplify the code for all users. So I will be completely honest. Floodplain management is very, there's a lot of technical terms, there's a lot of terminology, there's a lot of acronyms, there's processes, requirements. So I'm just going to hit the highlights to kind of help us in our discussion tonight. Um, in 1968, Congress passed the National Flood Insurance Act. This is codified in the Code of Federal Regulations. Um, the National Flood Insurance Act also created the National Flood Insurance Program. So when we refer to NFIP, that's what that stands for. In 1973, the Flood Disaster Protection Act was passed. This required state participation in the National Flood Insurance Program to receive federal disaster relief assistance. In 1980, the City of Asheville passed its local floodplain program by joining the National Flood Insurance Program. We adopted our firms, our flood insurance rate maps, and we adopted our own floodplain ordinance. Um, in 2000, as, uh, due to Hurricane Floyd that happened the previous year, the state, um, sorry, North Carolina was designated as a cooperating technical state. And what that means is that the state, North Carolina, assumes primary ownership and responsibility of our flood insurance rate maps for the state, for all North Carolina communities, and as part of the National Flood Insurance Program. So, um, the National Flood Insurance Program is administered by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. It provides federally backed flood insurance for owners that live in a participating community. Communities must adopt and enforce floodplain management ordinances to reduce future flood damage. FEMA also provides certain properties with discounted premiums to encourage community and property owner participation. Community participation is voluntary. We elect to be in this program. And there are audits that are known as community assistance visits, that the state actually does. Um, they perform those to ensure that the communities are meeting the requirements of NFIP. We are also, we also participate in the community rating system. This is another program administered by FEMA. It is a voluntary incentive program that recognizes communities that exceed the minimum requirements of the NFIP. City of Asheville joined in 2014, and we claim higher local standards to be in that program. And because of those higher local standards that we've claimed, policyholders are able to receive a 10% discount in their insurance premiums. So y'all seen this map before in the previous, um, slide. Firms, we've talked about that. Um, we adopted our firms, our flood insurance rate maps in 1980. Those have now become digital, so a lot of this information is online. Um, and specifically, you can find this information on the state's flood risk information system. We also have a lot of this information on our GIS system. Flood insurance, there is a flood insurance study that goes along with these maps. The study is an engineering analysis that models watersheds to determine the depth and the location, the widths of these floodplains, um, or this 1% annual chance event. Um, special flood hazard area is the land in the floodplain subject to that 1% or greater chance of flooding in any given year. And we often refer to this as the 100-year, but like we talked about previously, it's not, it's not an event that happens every 100 years. There is a 1% chance that that event can happen in any given year. Um, the extent of that base flood, so the, the light blue area, the extent is called the floodplain. So when we talk about these areas, we'll often refer to it either in a special flood hazard area or a floodplain. The base flood elevations are the water surface elevations of the base flood event. Floodway, as Stephanie mentioned previously, it is the most critical part of the floodplain. This is where the waters are the deepest and where velocities are the fastest. So we really want to protect that floodway area. And then the 500-year, again, that is the 0.2% chance that that event can happen in any given year. And we do not currently regulate in the 500-year, um, area. So the updates that we are presenting tonight, again, is Section 724. Um, I don't have a slide on that, because really, we are just clarifying and simplifying that language, not changing the intent of it at all. 725, um, the definitions for Chapter 7, we are providing updates and additions to align with the state model flood ordinance. Section, section 712-1, the flood protection section, um, divided these changes into three categories. One is the community assistance visit request. So we had an, an actual audit in June of this year, and, um, what came out of that is they made some requests that we include certain things in our ordinance that we didn't have, that the model ordinance does. As part of that process, when staff was reviewing that, we also identified some additional updates that we thought would help clarify, um, certain areas of our ordinance. And then there are some additional clarification language in our regulations, and we'll get into more of those details. So for the definitions, again, just updates and additions to align with the state model ordinance. Some of those examples, I did not include them all, but some of the examples for updates included the addition of, the definition of addition, um, floodway, mean scene level, and substantial damage. Some additions that we included for definitions were the digital flood insurance rate maps, because our firms are now digital. So those are called DFirms. Letter of map change, there's various, um, various types of those. We have what we call a CLOMAR, conditional letter of map revision, a LOMAR, a letter of map revision. So anytime anybody does developments and they're changing, um, the floodplain, the base flood elevations, the floodplain widths, floodway widths, they are going through a letter of map change. So we included that, um, definition. North American Vertical Datum of 1988. We no longer reference mean scene level, we reference everything based on NAVD-88. When we go out and survey, that's what, that's what they're referencing. Um, some deletions include flood fringe, flood profiles, and the National Geodetic Vertical Datum, just because we don't, we're not using those anymore in our ordinance. So the changes for 712-1, again, those three categories, we had- So the changes for 712.1, again, those three categories, we had our audit request, and those included, they wanted us to add the language from the model ordinance on statutory authority. They wanted us to add some additional language on the basis for establishing those special flood hazard areas. And then there's various updates to FEMA forms. They've changed the names of their forms, so they wanted us to update those in our ordinance as well. The second category, additional updates to align with state and federal requirements, we have updates to agency names and the reference to mean scene level. We also added the determination of substantial improvement and damage. And what that is, it does appear to be quite a large section, but all that is, is what Derek is currently doing right now as part of when an event happens, we have to go out and do assessments, we have to do substantial damage estimation. So that, that's just included to kind of spell out that process in our ordinance. So the third category is clarification language of the regulations. We do have this cumulative, cumulative cost tracking. We changed it from one year to five years. I think we did that previously, like some years ago. And it's in the, it was included in the definitions, but it wasn't clear. I think we actually left the one year in there, but we included, the five-year was in there too. So this is just making sure, clarifying that we are changing it from a one-year cumulative tracking to a five-year.
So in the event that a property is flooded more than in a five-year period, if the first time was 25% of the value of the structure, and the second time was 26% of the value of the structure, would be required to come into complete compliance for substantial damage?
Yes. There is actually another, and it's not included in this, because this is, like Stephanie said, this is just the foundational piece. There's also another piece that is in the state model ordinance that speaks to that very instance. And if we did include that in our ordinance, somebody that does have that 25% the first time, and another 25% five years, I think it's up to 10 years later, they would be eligible for additional funding from FEMA. It's called ICC. I can't remember what ICC stands for.
My understanding of, is the intent around this less about if you get hit multiple times, but more like?
Substantial improvement.
Yeah.
This also, yes.
More like people will?
Do a little bit now.
40% improvement one year and come back the next year?
Yes.
And so you're saying that by making this change?
It's in a five-year period.
It's a five-year window.
Yes.
I think, I think it is a good question that Commissioner Wheatley raises around, does the clock reset, you know, or what, what could be an event that triggers a reset of the clock? Because, yeah, I understand the intent to prevent circumvention, but with the reality being multiple events could trigger multiple damage and repair needs, could that be baked into the language somehow? Commissioner Cyclos?
I just have an additional question. So let's say, I mean, we've all seen two years ago, you know, 2020, 2022, property values increased dramatically. So let's say there's an event, you know, you have, do some level 25% of improvements or whatever, and then your property value goes from 100,000 to 200,000. You know, is there opportunity for updated appraisal? Or are you stuck with the appraisal before the, you know, how does that cumulative five years work? Is it sliding five years?
Hmm.
Or is it five years, as I think I read it, it's five years from the start of the initial work?
It would be CO to CO.
Certificate of occupancy to certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
As far as like the tracking.
Okay.
Another question on the same topic is, you know, there could be very reasonable reasons other than trying to skirt the regulation to defer and delay, you know, the financial impact of having to make repairs. Five years seems like a reasonable time period, but has there been any thought around, you know, well, I can't quite afford to make all the improvements necessary, want to do the base improvements to make my building habitable, and do the rest later?
Yes. I mean, I think that is a component of this.
Yeah, I guess the, the question is, do you disqualify somebody simply because they're spacing out their repairs?
To be more economical for them.
Correct.
How does it negatively, I'm just trying, I'm struggling with, how would it negatively impact someone who's spacing out their repairs?
I was going to ask you to rephrase the question as well for staff, because I was thinking the outcome would be the same.
Yeah. I think, I think as I'm thinking through it, it's, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm understanding now that it's not an impediment. I'm just trying, I guess why I'm trying to contemplate are all of the unintended consequences of a, you know?
Yeah. I think we under, we understand the move to five years was to kind of close a loophole. That was actually, this is a recommendation from the 2007 task force, was to close this loophole. So making 50% improvements one year, and then the next year making another 50, then the next year making another 50. So I understand that as the intention. I just want to make sure that five years is a good amount of time, and if your property value doubles in that time, what was 50% is no longer 50%.
Well, it's also an interesting conversation around, you know, what does climate change look like? How is climatological data actually aggregated? Climatological data is historical data. So moving forward, you know, a 100-year event or a 0.2% probability of happening may change significantly. And so in one way, this looks far more equitable as a community to move from one year to five years. And also, there might be value in, for instance, like a 10-year horizon, because if we're seeing a 100-year event happen every seven years, and these kinds of gray area, nearly substantial damage events happen in these areas, you know, I just, you can see that basically after five years, the window shuts, and you go back to potential for 50% reinvestment in the property. So the question is really around what kind of incentives or disincentives do, does one want inside of, you know, an area that could be flooded? And how much do we actually know moving forward within climate change? Does our city even have the ability to track, you know, permit costs for a property over a 10-year period, you know? It's, it's a question worth thinking about, because take, for instance, like Marquis is a major structure down there. You know, that structure was probably worth relatively little prior to the investment of activating it into a shared commercial space. The value of that structure, I'm sure, was rebase lined after the renovation, so increasing in value. That, I'm not sure that that space was open for five years before this flood. And also, we know for sure that it would have been flooded significantly during the 2004 event. So that was 20 years in a 100-year floodway. I just, I almost wonder if we need a longer horizon just to understand how properties down there are being improved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We're just going to, you guys can talk amongst yourselves. We're just going to confer.
Well, while they're talking, I have a few questions, but I want to make one, like, bigger picture point to my fellow commissioners. Like, we're not closing the loophole here, we're like solidifying the loophole here.
Right.
Because you can still improve your building by more than 50% of the value. You just have to now comply with flood regulations, which I'm sure is cost prohibitive, civil engineers, I don't know, put the building on stilts. I mean, I'm sure there's very significant dollars that can be required to meet that regulation. So, but if we're going to be building in a floodplain, like, we're allowing loophole for people not to do the flood prevention measures that might save those buildings, period. I'm not against having this loophole because we don't want to make it cost prohibitive for anyone to build in a flood zone. It won't be applicable to all groups, but like, if you got enough money, you can still do whatever you want and comply with flood regulation measures that might protect your building if people are in that area. So I'm just making that as a point for the Commissioner. We're still leaving the loophole to the bigger problem.
That brings up a question for me. Can you, like, pretend that I'm in sixth grade and not get all technical, and give me an explanation of, like, we're using the language loophole, but just remind me what was happening before this? Because I think that the conversation we're happening, we're having here is, has so many, I want to make sure that this conversation, what, what you've been teeing up is saying, like, we're ironing out inconsistencies, we're getting back to alignment. And I want to be clear on, was there a loophole? Was it inconsistent? Were we saying, you could do this, you couldn't do this? Remind me what the before times were, because there are major implications for approving this, that I want to understand how much community involvement do we need before we make any changes? Or is this really, really just ironing something out? So just remind me of the pre-state before this.
So my understanding is this is just to try to prevent those that would just, this year I'm going to do this little bit, next year I'm going to do this little bit, and not have to comply with the regulations.
So that is making a policy change. It's not closing a loophole or making?
Is this from the model?
This is, this is from, this is from the state model ordinance. It is from, yes. And I will say, we have claimed this before, because this is in our definitions currently. So we have claimed this as a, as something that we implement.
As our policy.
Yes.
But throughout the various places that we refer to when people are building, it's not crystal, crystal clear. Have we been holding people accountable to this previously, despite the lack of legal, like, of written clarity?
That is my understanding, is that since this was added to our ordinance, we have been holding to the five-year.
Okay.
There's some clarification?
Commissioner Cyclos, I'm a city attorney for the City of Asheville. The language, as written, to get to your specific question of where, what happens if you have an increase in property value, right now, as written, and this is a existing piece of the code, is that it says you look at the value before the first improvements, and then if you exceed the value, if you exceed 50% of the value of the product, the building as it was before the first improvement, that's when you have a substantial improvement. So you're looking at the snapshot in time?
Right.
Before the first improvement. So I think that, I think that's what you were asking, I hope.
That is exactly what I was asking. And that's, that's what I thought I read. Okay. I just wanted to make the point that within that five years, I mean?
Well, that's a significant difference, you know, from CO to CO is what we were told. And from CO to CO over five years, if you're like at the point Commissioner Cyclos talking about, we were seeing residential property values appreciate between 17 and 23% a year. That's a big difference over five years from the initial improvement of, you know, date zero to the fifth year. So I think that's an important clarification to note. Thank you.
Should we continue with the presentation or any other questions on the five-year issue? One thing I did want to mention is, in terms of like closing a loophole, for me, what's important to understand is this is based on flood insurance, which is all about risk management. It's not risk elimination. And so, you know, we are not precluding things. We are managing and distributing the risk and accepting certain risks in our community. And there are substantive conversations that need to happen about how much we should allow to be built. But since it's, I think that's probably why these, you know, what we're calling loopholes in this, is because it's about risk distribution and risk management in the aggregate.
And it was a good point about what are, what is our, what are we accepting as policy? Because I believe in the code, there's one place that does say one year, another place that does say five years. So we are, I guess, what's we were calling kind of?
We're clarifying.
We're clarifying closing that option.
Yeah, I'm just, what I was trying to stumble into communication is, I think that I am very eager for us to look at bigger policy changes than what is being coming. I'm ready for that conversation. It's going to be very difficult. It is not black and white to me. It is not never build there again, and it is not no regulations ever. And so I just want to make sure that, I mean, this is the first order commission meeting since the late period, right? We wouldn't, we don't even have council committee meetings yet. I just want to be really, I just want to, wanted to understand and be really sure, like, we aren't accidentally making some broad policy change, because there's a lot more people that I want to talk to first. And so, so even the loophole language is like, wait a minute. What I'm hearing you say is, we have been enforcing this, but our paperwork doesn't say that 100% explicitly. So we are making the paperwork explicitly say what we've been enforcing. And that, that was where I was going to go around.
And I'm sorry I brought up that language. That was just language I'm adopting from other?
Yeah.
Task force plans that have been put out.
Totally, totally. So thanks for the little digression, but I think it's important. I've been getting people saying, we're rushing this. And I don't know that we are, so.
Can I, Amy, to clarify, it's in the definitions section where you would, it's sort of implicit, but this is the process and how you do it. And so in addition to the one that Amy mentioned, it looks like a lot adding to the body of the flood horns, but it was just because we'd be reading it, and it would say, as shown in definition, whatever. Then you have to go back to the definition. So in this instance, and the prior one that you mentioned, it's like, let's just pull it in, so somebody hasn't having to go back to the definition to say, oh, what does that mean again? So I'm sorry, Amy, you had pointed out the other one where you said, this is Derek's process for evaluating.
Yes.
It is now in the body of it. I think it's the?
It's this, the D-force.
D-force, mhm. And then this section. Because we're really cognizant, this clarifying, it can't be a policy change. We've been doing it, just clarifying it.
Same thing for the regulatory flood protection elevation. That was also something that was included in the definitions. So we're kind of pulling that into the body of the ordinance. And then the non-conforming use, we'll say there was a potential legal ambiguity in the non-conforming use and structures substantially damaged. And we're clarifying that with the new language we provided. Okay. Do y'all have any questions on that section? So this is just kind of, what, you know, what does this all mean? What are the implications? Permits are required to do any work in the floodplain. No matter what you do, you need to, we, we have to permit floodplain work. When we have a base flood event, structures with their first floor levels and electrical components below base flood elevations will be impacted. The minimum requirement is to elevate or floodproof structures to the base flood elevation. And that's a requirement of the National Flood Insurance Program and State Building Code. Any new structure, or substantially damaged structure, or substantially improve, or substantially improvements, substantial improvements made, will need to be elevated or floodproofed. If you want to further reduce flood impacts and increase resiliency, structures should be elevated or floodproof above base flood elevations. So this is where the free board comes in. So the free board is So, this is where the freeboard comes in. So, the freeboard is the height added to the base flood to account for all the unknowns. When, when you have those engineers doing the models, there's a lot of unknowns that goes, that go into that modeling. When an actual flood event happens, you have a lot of debris that comes down the stream, right, that could clog a bridge. That clogging of a bridge, that opening also causes, it causes water to back up even more. So, all of these unknowns, when a flood event happens, that's what the freeboard is for. It's to provide that additional protection for all those unknowns that happen.
Is that two feet?
Yep, so four feet, four feet is the state recommendation. They recommend that communities do four feet. The state minimum recommendation is two feet, and that is what we are prop, I mean, it's in our ordinance currently as part of the definition. That's what we have recommended. The two.
Real quick, you said it's included or it's not included currently?
It is included. It is included as part of our definitions.
So, there's a definition of freeboard, but where is it executed inside the policy?
It is not currently.
So, it's not included in the policy, there's just a definition.
It's in the definitions of the ordinance, but not in the body of.
So, this sounds like the similar dynamic we just had with the five-year, is that it's in the defin, so it's in the definitions, but it's not explicitly in the ordinance, but by being in the definitions, we have been holding people accountable to it pre-storm.
The word freeboard, the word freeboard is in the body of the text, so you have to then refer.
There you go. Okay. So, it is included.
It is.
Clearly, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it's clearly, it's clearly included. We're just writing it in crayon.
So, the freeboard.
An inch tall, so anyone can read it.
Freeboard piece combines with the base flood elevation, and so then we refer to the regulatory flood protection elevation. So, that is BFE plus freeboard, and so that's the way it's referred to in our, in our code now.
So, it's clear in legal terms.
Yeah, yeah, that we require our base flood and freeboard.
Yeah.
When did we establish that?
The two-foot freeboard? We did try to go back. We looked at some old ordinances. The best we could find was that this was pre nineteen ninety-five, that we had a two-foot freeboard for residential structures. And then, prior to twenty-ten, we had a one-foot freeboard for commercial structures. Not, I'm not sure what the difference was there, but we have had the two-foot freeboard in our ordinance for quite some time.
Okay. And now, we don't have a distinction between commercial and residential?
Correct. It is two-foot for both.
Okay. And in the two percent zone, is there a regulatory elevation here?
The point two percent, like that five hundred year, is, is there any, there are no requirements for development in that, in that area?
Just, just as out of curiosity, has, because there is other precedents, but has the city entertained, instead of BFE plus two, just regulating the five hundred year?
I mean, that, no, that definitely is a different policy, yeah.
I'm just wondering if that was ever bounced around. No?
I'm not, I'm not aware.
We didn't look at this time, as like a substantive policy change, that that would be a polar conversation for council.
Yeah.
But we didn't, I don't know if we found any record of it being considered in past ordinance provisions. But if we're looking at it going forward, that's definitely the type of thing that we were trying to keep out of this, while we're just trying to make consistency changes.
Because the BFE plus four, which is what the state recommendation is, is closer to the five hundred year.
Maggie nodding.
Well, I, yeah, I just think like, and I think later, we're gonna do the discussion piece, like dump all these ideas out there.
Yeah.
Like now, this is the first time we've gotten together, right? Like, we've all probably been sitting there wondering, what could, should we do? And so, now we just wanna start getting that out there so that we can then have community conversations about it. Because I think, yeah, I'll save that for the special question, but yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question to what you just said, Commissioner Cycle? The BFE plus four within the one hundred year would be equivalent to.
Not equivalent, but it's close, and it depends, because it changes based on cross-sectional area. But in, in a lot of areas, it could be closer.
And then, so we've touched on regulatory flood protection elevation. There are different requirements for residential construction versus commercial construction. For residential construction, they have to, the only option is for them to elevate. Commercial construction, they have the option to elevate or floodproof.
What has been the community response to this? Or is there confusion because the language isn't consistent, or?
Like, up until now, when people have been trying to do work in there, or?
Or even right after.
Post-storm.
Yeah.
Like, for those that have come in for permitting and wanted to rebuild?
Most of what we're experiencing is a permissible instance. So, thousand applications, nine hundred permits, you've got those hundred outliers. I, I would say that there is, I've been to a few sites to talk. I've been with Mark McFinni as well, to talk with certain business owners, just to give them the background, encourage them to come in for the permit while it's free, because it's.
December thirty-first.
The free permit program is over on December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. So, we haven't been getting what I would consider a lot of feedback from those severely impacted or non-permittable owners at this time. But we're expecting it once we start issuing substantial damage letters.
When we're talking about residential versus commercial, are we talking state building code definitions or like occupancy classifications? Like, is a multifamily residential structure residential or commercial?
We consider single-family duplex and townhomes residential. Anything above that would be considered a commercial use, because like an apartment building would be a single landowner that charges rent. So, that would be a commercial business. So, and there's.
And again, as you're issuing permits, you're enforcing the spirit of the regulations are just not what you want them to be.
Most of the permits that we're issuing are for non-substantially damaged repairs.
Like trades permits?
Yes, yes.
When are you anticipating your substantially damaged letters to be released or sent? And are they being distributed in bulk at one time, or?
The draft language is through my desk. It's in her desk. Once it goes to her desk, it has to go to his desk. And then, it may escalate above attorneys and go to the CMOS. So, the language that we're using is directly from FEMA. The problem with FEMA is, they don't have the sense of Asheville that Asheville residents have, so their letters are very harsh. And we don't wanna send out harsh letters to people who have been impacted. So, we're trying to say the same thing, but in a sweeter, nicer way.
Like, put it in chat, chat GPT and say, add burns?
We may have done that. I, I haven't personally, I haven't personally, because that kind of scares me a little bit, but I know it's becoming more and more popular. But, so there is a process to get the letters in a point where it's a form, and that form is not an abrasive slap in the face to our owners and residents and whatnot, so.
Is there a time requirement on this process, or just kind of best practice as soon as possible?
Best practice as soon as possible. The FEMA sent us a letter on August, October eleventh of twenty-twenty-four, and then it essentially said, by the end of October, you needed to be done with your substantial assessments. There was no timetable for the substantial damage estimating. Those get confusing, I'm sorry. But we are actively doing the estimates now. We have a thousand and fifty of them to do. We are somewhere in the ballpark of two hundred, two fifty complete. But without the letter approved, I can't send the results. So, it probably will go out in bulk. We are targeting those structures that we know are substantially damaged, because they're either missing or they're knocked down, or, you know, you can clearly look at some of these buildings and go, it is substantially damaged. So, we're focusing on those first, so that when the letters are ready, they can go out first.
Is there any, sorry, are, is there any other method of communication besides sending out the letter that's being considered? Because if their structure is substantially damaged, they may not be getting mail?
Those are questions that we have to answer. Like, one of the questions I have is, does it have to be a certified letter?
Right.
Right? Because there's all, we wanna make sure the owners get these letters.
Right.
The owner may be displaced, and we may not have the address of that displacement. The owner may not be with us anymore. All kinds of things to consider. So, a lot of that is going to be, okay, we know the mailing address of the owner, we're gonna start there. If it comes back to us, we will have to do a little bit more homework to find where the owner is.
And we are working on communications to kind of include these steps and where to go for the information on our website. We're, like, planning and public works are working together to make sure we're saying the same thing and putting that on the website, just so people know if they do have a structure, if they haven't got a letter, who, where they can go to get the information. We, we are working on additional communications.
Is there consideration to extend the deadline for the free permits?
Sorry, say it again, Mark McFinni.
Are you all considering extending the deadline for the free permits?
Oh, yeah, great question. So, there's two things that are, that are happening here, right? That, that have the waived fees for the, for the permits. One of them is, within our own fee schedule, we have the ability to waive them in, in a state of emergency. And so, that was what we did initially, right? That's where we took those off, so the, within four days, we were probably already ready to waive those fees. The next thing that came out is, there was legislation that was generated, and, and it's a session law went into place very quickly. And that one gave it the December thirty-first deadline. We are still gonna be, I'm assuming, into, into a state of emergency, declared state of emergency seek here within the city of Asheville. That will, at that point, we, we can still extend that waiver based on that. And we are in conversations about what that looks like and what that extended time looks like. We don't really know what that is yet, but it's, the city of Asheville, Buncombe County Declaration of Emergency allows the waiver to extend beyond that December thirty-first date.
Actually, I do have one question, I think for Derek, maybe for both of you. So, are, are you saying that the permits, we haven't begun to see the permits coming in for structures that have been substantially damaged or destroyed? And so, a lot of the changes in the ordinance haven't, they weren't really gonna affect the permits that have been coming in, because they're not substantial. So, we're getting to the point in the timeline where we're gonna send these letters out. People are realizing kind of the situation they have on their hands, and the changes in the ordinance will be impactful.
Great. And your question for your step out the timing of permits and applicability of any changes?
Yeah. So, the question has to do with the permits that have been coming in, being more, not substantial repairs, and that the properties that have been substantially impacted, that those haven't come in yet, because those letters haven't been sent out. And so, just trying to understand the implications, the folks that maybe have the substantial impacts, they haven't submitted those permits yet.
Yeah. So, the way under state law that it works is that there's a statute and doctrine called permit choice, where if you've got a permit application in, or you've submitted a permit application, and either state law or city ordinance changes while your permit application is in, you can choose which set of ordinances you're going to comply with. That's set at the state level. We don't have any control over that. Did that answer the question?
Okay, I think so.
Okay.
Under the permit choice, does, how does, like, a vested property right interact with permit choice?
They're pretty similar. In fact, I think they're both covered in the same section of one sixty-D. So, vested rights can come about because of a very similar thing to what I've just described to Commissioner Jane Margaret, which is that you've got some sort of application in. Vested rights can also come about just by virtue of things you're doing on your own. Like, if you've expended a very large amount of money pursuing a certain project, and then an ordinance changes, you might then also be able to make the same argument about not having to comply with a changed ordinance, but that's based on your own activity and expenditures, not based on when you had an application in.
I guess in the case of permit choice, somebody would be submitting an application based on a regulation that exists currently. Meanwhile, owning the land as it is, you would have, a cha, any change in a regulation would also modify your use of it. So, in this case, would somebody who has already previously owned the land before? In this case, we're attempting to not change any regulation that I hear.
Right.
So, it's all about clarifying. In this case, the intent would be to change no vested right of any property. Is that the intent?
So, it is, the only potential exception to that is on the, so, Miss Deaton mentioned the changes that we're making to the nonconformity section. There was some ambiguity there about exactly what that provided. We think that the intent all along for the city, and we think that there is a pretty clear record of this, is that we intended to make any substantially damaged property have to meet the two-foot freeboard requirement. There's an argument that someone could make that, that because of that section on nonconformities, that they really didn't have to comply with that two-foot freeboard. They would always have had to comply with the state building code, and they would always have had to comply with the FEMA regulations. And we also think they were required to comply with our zoning regulation, which includes that two-foot freeboard. But that's the ambiguity there. We think we're just clarifying the fact that they'd always had to comply with that two-foot freeboard in addition to state building code, in addition to the FEMA regulations. But that's at least an argument that somebody could make, that I own this property, I wasn't previously required to add that two-foot freeboard, but that's up to them to make that argument, and I don't know of an instance where that's specifically been made so far.
So, the two-foot freeboard is the one portion of our policy that actually supersedes state and building code?
We wanna be careful about how we say that, because as Ms. Deaton indicated, the recommendation from the, the folks who run the model ordinance and who do our audit visits is that we should really be at the four-foot level. And so, the two-foot is in one way just the very minimum that we could do. We think we've always been doing that, but there is, I'm telling you, there's at least an argument that could be made that people who had a property that was destroyed and submitted a permit application right away might only have been subject to the building code and FEMA regulations, which don't have the two-foot freeboard. We think we've been, we think we've always intended the two-foot freeboard to apply even to destroyed structures. State's telling us that we should maybe think about going a bit further and adding it up to four. But that's the one area where, to get, drill down on your point, that there's at least a, a argument based on that ambiguity that Miss Deaton men, mentioned earlier, that that two-foot, two-foot freeboard might not have applied. But we, we don't agree with that argument, and we're thinking it's just a clarification. And, and, and then we might have a policy conversation at a later date with council on the, on whether we should take on that recommendation to go to the four-foot as well, but that's a, that's a later date conversation.
And I think I asked, the, the two-foot freeboard, is the state minimum?
I think the state minimum recommendation.
Minimum.
The National Flood Insurance Program, minimum is to elevate the base flood.
The base flood, okay.
State's minimum recommendation is two-foot. They're over all recommendations.
And the building code is this?
And the building code is basic state.
Yeah. So, we're above the floor.
And the two-foot is what unlocks the ten percent premium reduction?
Yes, yes. So, the, no, yes, the, because, because we do the two-foot freeboard and because we moved to. Yes, yes, so, no, yes, the, because, because we do the two-foot freeboard, and because we moved to the five-year, we get additional points for CRS program, and that basically gives us the 10%. If we didn't, we would move to a, a lower class, and policyholders would only get 5% reduction in premiums.
Okay, that was one of my questions with the five-year, with it being in the model ordinance, that is significant in the points that we get, and maintaining-
Either here, or if you, if you don't do the two-foot, or you don't do five-year, I did all the points. Either one or both, and it gives you to that lower level.
I just want to bring one point up. As we talk to building code, and, and once again, the idea is to align this into the building code and the other documents that provide our regulation. While the building code itself, within the body of the code, doesn't reference the freeboard, the body of the code does reference the, the manual to build into the flood zones, which is ASCE 24, which is the American Society of Civil Engineers. That 24, ASCE 24, does identify what the required freeboards are. And they base it on basically what your occupancy type is. They call it the risk of the building, right? But your occupancy, and it does have, it has at least one, but generally, their two-foot freeboard, based on the ASCE 24. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Just a comment. I think it would be helpful for the commissioners to understand how the BFE might change in the coming years with FEMA remapping, with the NOAA Atlas 14 data set changing to reflect our newer trends in rainfall. You know, we're setting this two-foot freeboard now, but the implications, the way that that can change, the actual elevations these buildings need to be at, may change for, for the better. I mean, there is some of that baked in, some climate change protection. Doesn't mean we shouldn't consider going to four feet.
Yeah, to add to that, with, with FEMA going to T, two-D modeling as the new maps come out, this is gonna have a big impact.
And, and they also, the state has some advisory flood maps out there online, where they look at some of that information to see how high could flood events get. So there, there is information already out there online that we could, could be using as well, but that's another larger discussion.
We're hearing that new maps could be as soon in draft mode by the summer. Wow.
Well, preliminary maps are due out in late 2025. I did, just in ta, in speaking with state officials, they do want to do some additional LiDAR collection, and run that again, just to see how Hailene has impacted their models. But that could take a longer period of time. But preliminary maps due out late 2025.
Thank you.
Okay, and just, I mean, we, we've talked about this, I'm, I'm not gonna go over anymore, but we had a great discussion on that. And then again, just the, the key takeaways for y'all to see in that.
Okay, uh, we were audited back in Ju, June. Was Buncombe County also audited?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay. I just know our, our, before these text changes, the code language is very similar in Buncombe County.
Be, because we are following, the state has created their model ordinance. So all the local communities that are part of the National Flood Insurance Program, they all kind of mirror that same model ordinance language.
Okay, and so could, I guess that's not for you to say, but could we expect Buncombe County to follow in suit to some of these similar changes?
I don't know. It would be up to, it would be up to them to pass their own.
I understood the idea of discount for flood insurance. I think they'd be seeking it for sure.
And I'm, I can't remember what, what Buncombe County's current requirements are related to freeboard.
Same, it's all the same. It's substantially-
The same.
The same. It's BFE plus two, yeah.
I've got a question about, in the, in the permit requirement section for floodplain development permit. There's a new expectation, that's a statement that all materials below the regulatory flood protection elevation must be flood-resistant materials. And then there's a further reference later on to FEMA Technical Bulletin to flood damage resistant materials requirement. Could you talk a little bit about what is a flood-resistant material? And, you know, sometimes, I, I guess when we have these references, it's important to make sure that people who are seeking permits have access to the source material, you know, that's referenced, so that they can design appropriately.
Yeah, absolutely. And, Mark Metheny, again, they're, they're referencing a couple of places FEMA has that documentation, and actually, one of our resource groups is actually working on compiling, will start working on compiling the central location for all of that. So people will be able to have direct access to that, certainly more quickly than, than we have experienced here. But like, for example, you know, the difference between drywall or hardy panel, right? A cement board as opposed to a gypsum board, you know, a, a, a pressure-treated, a water-resistant wood as opposed to regular wood metals instead of, you know, other materials. So, so that's the general piece of it. You know, concrete block can, can be there as, as kind of the building materials you build on top of that for potential raising of buildings, or something along those lines. So, so that's really what it is. It's not, I mean, yeah, so FEMA does have recommendations as to, as to what those materials are. And, and we're actually working, as the city, to, to put those into a more consolidated area, so that we can have a lot better conversations back and forth with designers, building owners, contractors and such.
Does it include things like fasteners and methods of fastening, so we're preventing debris from entering the flood? Or is that, would that be a separate specification or provision?
Would that be along, like, a flood-proofing process, or?
I think there's language about buoyancy and, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
To make sure that those things are anchored.
Yeah, anchor, anchor.
So that they don't become floating projectiles when we-
Gotcha. Great. Well, that, that does bring the question up, because a lot of the language changes from, you know, a building to a structure. And then if you look at our structure definition within the definition portion 725, it says a structure means that which is built or constructed for flood protection regulations. A structure is walled, roofed building or manufactured home, a gas or liquid storage tank, or other man-made facility, or infrastructure that is principally above ground. I noticed at least one very buoyant greenway. And so, I was wondering how, you know, if, if I were to interpret this, it looks like greenways, roads, any improvement, even on a site, or, or public site, would need to be one of these flood-resistant materials. Have we looked at that as far as like, maybe not, maybe it's not part of it. Is, is a road or greenway not considered infrastructure that is principally above ground?
It is, but it's not considered-
Sorry, could you, could you step up to the mic?
It is not considered a structure.
I mean, le, the, the law is such a strange thing, but I read that in, "infrastructure," I mean... It's a broad structure definition that's referenced in the building definition. Yeah, I, I just, you know.
We are reading a section of our ordinance that clarifies something about structures, yes? Or definitions?
We're just looking at the definitions, and we have changed them, so you're just pointing out that-
Mm-hmm.
That it, that they should have been clarified?
Well, the change is to the building definition.
For flood protection regulations.
But that's not for a definition of structure. It's in the, it's in the definition of the building.
That references the definite, the existing definition of structure, which is what I'm pushing for. It was actually brought up as a public question to me, that they were reviewing the definitions we are modifying, and they were like, "You guys are putting structure in everywhere, but I don't see structures in your definitions." And I was like, "It's because it's in the definitions that are not being modified." If I were to read this, to me, you know, I don't know, is a road considered infrastructure?
I just, I just want to say that a road is principally underground. So for our greenways, the same thing. There's more underneath a road or a greenway, it's more underneath. There's a base, and there's layers, then above ground. So, we can take a, take a look at that definition, but I don't think roads or greenways are an issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, you know, like also, if there was an elevated walk path along the river, that would be, you know, a boardwa, a boardwalk. You know, that would be a structure above ground.
And it prob, it probably would have to be elevated in some way, yes.
Same with like the walking bridge.
It would either be, it would either be elevated, or you would have to actually do a flood study to determine what the impacts to the floodplain are.
So the answer is maybe, depending on the construction type. Maybe it's not a valid question, I don't know.
I think, I mean, it's, it's a valid question. It's a broad definition of structure, it's a broader question, for sure.
Yeah, and, and, and getting to the point, and getting to the point where we're talking about maybe a boardwalk or something like that, clarifies that a little bit. Where, where that historically is basically based on engineering design, right? So there, there's no prescriptive way of basically doing that. So when we find that we're running into these, these products, or these elements that fall into the floodway, that, that kind of come in, in the, in an undefined and unsure area, then, then really, it's a requirement for engineering design to look at, like, like Amy just mentioned, a flood study to see how it's actually impacting, but also how it can withstand the flow of the river, and the volume of the river on it. So that would basically be through an engineering design.
Really cool, I appreciate it. I mean, I would just like to be really clear that these strange little word conversations we're having right now is exactly why we're doing this entire review. Is that, you know, somebody is analyzing words in a different way than we are. So, not trying to be awkward or obtuse, but, you know, if you look at, for instance, the gross square footprint of a building, based on our definition, you know, we have many outdoor areas that are being used as if they're a building. And if you look at our definition, they should be counted in the gross square footage of the building. But if you look at, you know, the tax record, and the way the building code is applied to that site, it isn't actually assumed to be part of the structure, so.
There's really no uniform way to measure a commercial building, like, there's no scene.
So, that's a, it's a point well taken. So we pulled up the, the definition of structure in the model ordinance, and then compared it to what you just noted. And you're right, there is actually a discrepancy that we didn't catch between structure as defined in the model ordinance versus in our existing ordinance. Now, we weren't proposing to change this section of our ordinance, so I think that's why we, why we missed it. But the only omitted words from our definition versus the model ordinance is, they omit that language of, "or other man-made facility or infrastructure that's principally above ground." So I think that, I think we, we could easily just delete those, since we're already in 725, we could delete those words from that definition of structure, just as it relates to the flood ordinance. Because I think that point is, is a relevant one.
Good catch. Streets. Thank you so much, this has been a really information-packed presentation, and it's, as you can-
Was there a, that was a brief, she was gonna do a brief presentation.
Of course, our recommendation is to approve of our proposed changes.
Thank you.
Any other, any thoughts, questions, further deliberation?
I would like to say, we did get some public comment mailed in, emailed in, some from other committees and commissions. Basically, the gist of all those was, don't rush through this, but in my opinion of this presentation, I think it's mostly clerical stuff, just confirming, or just making sure we align legally with the definitions of FEMA and such, so I don't think we're rushing forward to making policy change. Which we do, we should talk about at some point, but not at this moment right now, to address those public comments. And, if you suggest to the chair, if there's any other public here that would come up.
I appreciate you referencing the comments that we received. It was, it was great to see public engagement on this issue. I'm glad that people are engaged and ready to provide input, and we're here to, to listen and seek that input. So, to, but to, to specifically the point of where a lot of this originated was from the June audit visit by FEMA. Could you walk us through whether there is normally any public engagement process on the recommendations that would follow an audit visit? You know, I think, was this being queued up for proposed UDO revision pre-Hailene, and then Hailene struck and reinforced the urgency?
Yes.
And if it had happened, I guess, pre-Hailene, what process would, you know, what would be the process for reviewing the ordinance change, just to align with the audit recommendations?
It would follow the same process. I mean, we, we wanted to make these changes as a result, you know, the requests that came from our audit. Again, we went through the model ordinance and said, "What are some additional things that need to be clarified in it?" We did not want to include any other policy changes. And yes, Hailene did spur this on, rather, made it happen a lot quicker.
Did you have a timeline for when it would have come to us, had there not been a hurricane?
Thank you. So, as far as staff's concerned, this doesn't really change anything. Is that right? So this doesn't change anything, policy-wise. That's the intent. So, why that's an important clarification?
There was that one exception of the, the nonconformity that could be construed that way. But honestly, based on Mr. Metheny's comments about how even the building code does have some requirements for freeboard above the BFE, there may actually be no substantive change, not even an arguable one.
Yeah, that ASCE-
Right, exactly.
Clarification, which is, Mr. Metheny always coming in with those details, love it. I guess why it's important is because we do have a riverfront redevelopment commission, you know? We have a group of specialists who are highly focused on the river itself. We also have a sustainability commission that may or may not be aware of climate change, but I suspect they are. We also have neighborhoods which are significantly impacted. We saw the number of residential structures impacted. And then we have the reality of the rights of nature, which we call a river like Longman. You know, Longman owns that property. You can see by the photo that he didn't consult our regulations. He didn't backcheck to make sure that the UDO had the adequate floodplain elevation before he went there. And if you go up in a hot air balloon and you look down, you'll see that that river goes many different places that aren't even mapped by FEMA. And so, without any significant changes to policy, what is the urgency to exclude public comment? What is the urgency to exclude public discourse about the way our river should be managed, and the relationship we maintain in these areas? I'm not sure, it's not clear to me.
What is excluded?
I'm excluding-
There's public comment here, you're open for this.
Oh, so-
Available currently right now, it'll go to council, so I understand your intention.
Oh, well, I just stated that the riverfront redevelopment commission exists for this specific reason. So I would say-
They don't have regulations.
Based on, well, we don't either. All we do is make recommendations. So, this, in fact, is only required because of 160D. So, correct, we don't have any, we could say, "Approve this," and you guys could disapprove it, city council. We could say, "Disapprove it," and you can approve it. We could say, "We'd like a continuation," and you could push for it to be on the agenda. So, this is a part of the process, yeah. I, I do feel that we've gone around public engagement, a- I do feel that we've gone around public engagement, appropriate public engagement on this. I do feel, for instance, we're talking about worrying about the insurance costs for people on the river. Well, insurance companies are not in the business of losing money. So if everyone in Asheville subsidizes floodplain regulation because we have repeated flooding events in Asheville, how do we know that an insurance company isn't just going to up the rates and the premiums around the city, which, as we know, have continued to go up over the last year? I don't know that we can confirm that. So grasping for a 10% reduction in floodplain policy on 9% of our city doesn't seem necessarily like the most equitable way forward, but it could be.
If I could, I think it's a fair point, a fair question that you raise, Commissioner Wheatley, and I, what, I know that time and time again, some UDO modifications have come through with a sense of urgency and, you know, we're tasked with the question of how urgent is this? And when will the more substantive change, when will that conversation happen? It's happened time and time again. So I think that it's a fair point and a fair question. For me, you know, what a lot of this does is establishes a much firmer baseline that we can then have those conversations around, because there won't be debate and discussion around what our ordinance is. There will be clarity. And so then we can have a much clearer conversation around, should we look at 500 flood? Should we look at four feet of freeboard? Should we do these other things? And we won't enter into the debate of, well, what's the, what are the current rules anyway? So I don't see it as an urgent proposition to satisfy, you know, our requirements under the flood insurance program. I see it more as sort of a part of the community conversation and establishing that baseline, so. But it is a fair and open question. This is the first time that an advisory board or commission has met to contemplate recommending something to council since Haleen, so it's something that we should take seriously. And we should take seriously whether there are, there's missing information or missing voices advising on what we should do. I appreciate your raising. Any other thoughts or questions? I would like to open for public comment. At that, at seven o'clock, we will open for public comment. Anyone here wishing to weigh in on this very interesting topic, important topic? Seeing none, I'll close public comment at seven o'clock as well. Further deliberation, questions, comments from the commission?
I'm going to have one question under definitions of substantial improvement. It says at least five years. Is that a discrepancy? In 725 definitions? Yes.
That goes to that cumulative requirement there, changing it from the one year to the five year.
Right, so it says at least five years here?
Hmm, okay. Yep.
So are you thinking, just striking at least?
Right. Well, we probably clarified it's five years in the body of the ordinance, but if we leave it like this, then if we came back, if you had a longer term, you wouldn't have to necessarily change this definition.
That's what I was just thinking.
So that's probably, this is taken from the model, state model ordinance, and probably is leaving it to the municipality to decide, you know, do you want to go longer than that? Do you, what do you want to do? We could clarify, if you wanted to say five years, get rid of the at least, if you feel like that makes it more clear? Because if we go longer, we could come back and change this definition as well? Whatever you think makes sense, because we are trying to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we're clarifying, we want to be consistent.
I'd say take the least down and make it five years.
My other question is around community engagement as well. Have there been any opportunities to engage with the public? Q and A sessions, workshops, things like that? Because this is a lot of new information to a lot of people. How is that information being sent out and shared?
So the public engagement that the city of Asheville has performed in the last two or three months has been really targeted to specific stakeholders. And so we have met, for example, with the historic Biltmore Village Association pretty much every week. We meet with a group of 12 to 15 business, well, property owners in the Greater River Arts Districts. We're meeting with them again next week. And I just bring those two up as examples. So we're having one-on-one conversations with the people who actually own the buildings and the property in the area. We have not had a larger conversation, which was brought out earlier, about the future planning and about whether or not we want to move beyond two feet of freeboard, for example, in our definition. But what I would say to you is that generally, the folks that we're talking about, each one has an individually different problem. One thing we didn't talk about tonight at all was variances that people can get from these requirements if they are historic building and the several different kinds of definitions that revolve around what is historic. And we can do another two or three hours just on that. There will be a presentation at the Board of Adjustment meeting on the 16th on this very, very item. So what I want to get across to you is, as staff, I feel pretty confident that the reason that we're asking for this change is very much aligned with what your chair just told you, which is we are setting the foundation and the baseline and cleaning the slate to be able to do any of the further policy changes that council and the community have conversations about. The people who are really going to be impacted by our regulations when it comes to substantial damage, they already know they're going to be impacted by it. And we've pretty much had conversations with them or their neighbors. And I'll go back to a question that was asked earlier. A lot of people who are in that situation, they're waiting and they're taking their time. This is really serious stuff. I know we're just talking about two feet, but the decision, I'm talking to people who know this, but I just want to underscore it for the community he's watching, the decision even to consider rebuilding structures is a really weighty one for people right now. So this is one tiny piece of their consideration. But we have talked to dozens of people who this would impact directly.
Other thoughts, questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue to allow for more public discourse and conversation on the topic.
Does your motion to continue include, like, to a date certain?
Until the riverfront redevelopment commission can have a look at recommended proposals by staff.
Just to clarify, the reason that this is becoming, before the board is even meeting tonight, the commission's meeting tonight, is because it was deemed an emergency situation. I think Councilwoman Allman can explain, the city council said no bodies can meet, no public meetings can happen unless it is related to an emergency. So we don't know when the next, I don't believe, Councilwoman Allman, we know when we're going to resume our more normal process. Just to clarify.
Yeah, I'm the liaison to the riverfront commission. I've talked to three of the commissioners about this topic ahead of time and haven't heard any concerns with them. Also, council hasn't set a date for resuming council committees or boards and commissions about this one, and council directly asked staff to bring us any emergency regulatory changes so that we could pave the path towards recovery. So this coming to PCC directly was a direct ask of council so that we could have any regulatory things we need now before we start broader policy changes.
No, I'd just like to add, Commissioner, I think what Commissioner Wheatley's ask is, is I feel like we're moving towards that, right? I mean, I think it's a combination of what Commissioner, or Chair Barton had mentioned as far as providing some clarity, and this is, what I'm seeing as, you know, the argument you were making about this not being any substantial change, right? This is exactly, this is policy, it's just clarification. I'm seeing this as legislative, to make sure that we are clear and that there's going to be, what I'm hoping is, full-throated effort towards community engagement in potential policy change, that I think a lot of people are seeking. And for that, for that reason, I think, I think I will be voting to approve this clarification.
So, yeah, respecting the motion on the table, do we have a second for the motion to continue? Hearing no second, the motion fails for lack of a second. Do we have another motion on this item?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the proposed text amendments to Chapter 7 of the Asheville Code Ordinance's Section, Section 7-2-4, Section 7-2-5, and Section 7-12-1. And I find that the proposed amendments are reasonable for in the public interest, are consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, meet the needs of the community, and have, one, aligned city regulations to state and federal requirements, and, two, clarified development language to better support permit applications, and city staff in the permitting process, and, three, simplify the approach to all users with the amendments from Commissioner Wheatley on structure and, Commissioner...
Zuyeska?
Thank you. Perkitch, that was the substantial improvement. I'd like to make the motion with the understanding that, you know, this is clarifying language and I'm not saying this is something that you can policy change.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes six to one. Thank you, staff, and look forward to seeing the conversation at city council. So now we return to the final slide of...
We can, I'll put it up just for discussion. You may not need it. So this is Steph Munsendal again, and this is just to tee you up as a conversation about what's next. We have taken copious notes of things you have discussed during this conversation, but are open to you letting us know anything you think about our data dashboard, additional floodplain development information that you could be interested in, or just policy topics in general that you would like to see moving forward. Thank you.
Do you mind if I?
Jump right in?
All right. So Asheville was identified in the 2021 Hazard Mitigation Plan to not have a floodplain management plan. I was wondering if that was a consideration? For Asheville to develop a floodplain mitigation plan?
I'm just going to record all of your questions at this point, if that's all right.
Plan. So the 2021 Hazard Mitigation Plan had a, it just documented prior to recommendations, it documented all the different levels of plans that would be useful in hazard mitigation. And Asheville was identified, it did not, there was no check mark next to Asheville having a floodplain management plan. It was a recommendation.
Surrounding cities that did?
No. And then something that's been really burning with me after this, as I've done numerous site assessments, as you can imagine, just as my role in my job, and we talk a lot about, in our ordinance, about floodproofing structures from water, buoyancy, anchoring, whatnot. But a lot of what I saw as being very destructive, which was brought up, was this, these floating projectiles. And I'm really just curious, this is a lot of curiosity of mine, what we have in place as a city by way of managing what's being stored. So not actual structures, what's being stored. You know, we all saw the U-Hauls floating down, the Swananoa, the shipping containers, the tanks, lots and lots and lots of debris. And when I designed, or when I previously had been designing in a floodplain, we were always designing for water. Putting a pavilion in a park, the electrical for the pavilion in a park had to be two feet above base flood elevation. We put that there. Open-air structure. Okay, this is good to go, you know, we get floodplain approval, this structure should be fine, and the structure would have been fine. But it got yanked out from the ground by a container floating by. And now that structure is a projectile. So I'm just curious, what we, what kind of policy plan do we have or should we have about what's being stored? One, what's allowed to be stored? And then, two, if we're allowing for storage, are we requiring a floodplain management plan from those property owners? And if we are, how are we enforcing that? Are we putting it, is it incumbent upon them to monitor storm events? Or is there some city central office that is monitoring storms and then reaching out to everybody who has a management file, management plan on file and saying, hey, we're looking at the next 24 hours, there's going to be some storm event, can you make sure that you engage your management plan and get your equipment out of the floodplain?
When you're talking about storage, this could be, I have a shed in my backyard. This could be, I run the U-Haul business and I have vehicles. It could be equipment, it could be any of those things, right? So we want to be, yeah, okay.
Dear Bill.
Yeah, just like, there's stuff in the yard, it could be the broad thing. So like, what is that like, commercial, residential?
A lot of nuance, a lot of questions, but I just know I saw a lot of stuff.
And, you know, we heard that... And, you know, we, we heard that debris caused impediment to swift boat rescue. You know, the rescue operation was impeded by the volume and type of debris that was in the waterway. So we're not only talking about damaged structure, we're talking about the potential to save human life in a floodplain. So it is a, I think it's a very good question and something that we should dig into deeply on what could and should be allowed. There's another, I, I like the idea of, you know, there are some types of residential developments that trigger an evacuation plan requirement, and so some sort of flood preparedness plan that's a requirement seems sensible, you know?
Well, I know, for example, you know, during construction in a floodplain, contractor, at least in a couple instances that I'm aware of, is required to have a floodplain management plan on file. They have to move all of their equipment out of flood danger, and they're required to monitor for storm events. Could we not have a similar requirement for commercial properties? You know, I mean, we're talking about residential and whatnot, but a lot of, a lot of the property down there is, is commercial, right? The, the big projectiles, could we not have a similar type plan in place? You have to move your equipment out of flood danger if something's being triggered, right? Some, someone is monitoring events to come. There's some threshold to hit a trigger, move your equipment out of the way.
Yes, I know. You know, and we did the evacuation order, it was for people. And we basically drew like a geocache, or a geomap over the places that are, climate resilience plan showed to be the most vulnerable for flood and landslide. But, yeah, like, what would it look like if it was more broad to be like, get your equipment out also? You know, like, I've talked, I've talked to so many people who've been impacted, and many property managers were telling people on Tuesday and Wednesday, like, in the Riverview Station, like, get your, get your stuff out of here. So people were moving inventory, they were moving equipment on Wednesday and Thursday. But that was just people who'd been through this rodeo in 2004, saying like, this could be bad, moving it. So what does it look like for the, for part of our emergency preparedness to trigger the equipment stuff?
So, I think not just equipment, but hazardous material as well.
Yeah.
You know, hazardous in either nature, the chemical or something, or if it's pressurized. I live right down from Holston Gases and their entire stockyard, of small-scale propane tanks to enormous, enormous propane tanks. We're flying down the river, end up against buildings, seeping. Our department had to burn off a substantial amount of propane that was left there. Those are uses, industrial uses, that I think we need to be looking at and considering, should this be in another place? Not only because now we don't have a propane supply and that business is, you know, having to deal with the wreckage, but because of the harm that can happen when it's all localized.
One other, you know, land use policy conversation I'd, I'd love to see us have in tandem with increased, potential increased regulation in the flood areas is then where, where can we build and how do we maximize where we're building? We alluded to that earlier, and, you know, there are several zoning text amendments that this body has recommended approval of that would allow greater use of commercial property along corridors in Asheville. Looking around, the resilient locations are commercial corridors, downtown. You know, these are locations that were able to weather the impacts much more readily than the vulnerable floodplain and floodplain-adjacent areas. So if we are, you know, contemplating some stricter regulation in the floodfront areas, we should certainly tie that to loosening and allow, and really allowing development to take place in the underutilized commercial corridors.
Yeah, 100% agree, and those are ready to go, those two you mentioned.
And like, how big is this Central Business District and all the regulatory and ordinance things around there? You know, does, does downtown fundamentally need to expand in size to accommodate the commercial districts that might be lost? Like, there's a lot of ways to think about it, but I, I think the dynamic I hear you bringing up, which I really appreciate, is there'll be a ripple effect to the whole community where people can live, where people can rent businesses if we tighten restrictions in that area. So then, where are we creating space for those people to stay part of our community instead of flood gentrification? I don't know what the right words are, but, you know, like, how do we make sure there's still space for those folks in their town and aren't going to leave?
And to that end, I think we need to apply a city, you know, I mentioned commercial corridors and downtown because that's where some of the pent-up zoning text amendments have been geared to target. But there was also a table of use recommendations to allow duplex and townhome. You know, a lot of the wisdom of our missing middle housing report would help absorb housing stock. I think it's also a good time to revisit our manufactured housing overlay and whether that's providing an allowance for a, a housing typology that's lower cost or discrimination against it, and whether we could enable and empower more neighborhoods to accommodate a wider variety of housing types.
I, I will say, we, we are fortunate to have a sizable amount of land in Asheville that is outside of some of these hazard areas. So we're talking a lot about flood now, but landslide areas, steep slopes is a really big one. When, when doing due diligence on, on, on development, you know, you want to consider your hazards for floods and your steep slopes because those things, what we saw from the storm, those, those are the things that, that are extremely harmful. And compared to cities or townships or areas like Swananoa or Chimney Rock, I think we have a lot of land that we need to tap into or untap, un, free up to be able to, to develop and densify. Just to reiterate what you're saying.
I bring up a question, none of the data I've seen from us, can we get a sense at some point of, what was the landslide deal in city limits? Like, how much of that happened? I, I know that when we've talked about residential, I've heard staff reference tree damage, but did we have much debris flow or landslide damage? We don't need an answer, but I think that type of context would just put me on the map of like, it was one, or like, that's actually a substantial piece of the pie. That, that would be helpful because I know that our resilience plans, and we've looked at steep slope a lot, I know that we've had issues on Town Mountain and other places that have caused a lot of infrastructure costs over the last two decades. So just, yeah, making sure we're not just thinking about flood, but also landslide, but understanding the reality of like, how much landslide issue was created by this horrific storm would be helpful.
There is publicly available data from the USGS, thank you.
From what happens since then?
Yeah. There's, there's over 1,600 landslides in the area.
In the city limits?
No, in the area, but you can overlay that data onto NGIS, you could overlay that data.
We've identified, we did site assessments, we did damage assessments, site assessments to document to actually locate where, where landslides.
Great, yeah. I just feel like anytime a new data point comes up, I'm always like, let's just log that because we always have so much information we want to gather. So there's a lot of that to do.
Following back on Commissioner Barton's point of exclusionary zoning practices, the River Arts District is a really good example of how we tried to incentivize development along the river. The use table, heights, density, within the Rad Form-Based Code is all greater than that, which is allowed along Merriman Avenue. So Merriman Avenue has two bus lines on it, existing infrastructure, underground utilities in some points. And so, as a city, I would like to really understand why we are creating artificial scarcity and then, you know, selecting a high-risk area like the River Arts District to try and encourage development. And, you know, if that's, I'm not even sure that's in alignment with the comp plan. Like, the entire 2017 Rad Form-Based Code is probably not actually in alignment with sustainability practices under climate change. So it'd be really interesting to, to better understand because we all saw the existential plight of, what was that, 167 Riverside Drive or whatever? Where, you know, they wanted 10 additional feet of an 80-foot-tall structure instead of a 70-foot-tall structure without the setback requirements. And, I mean, I'm sure a number of us drove over the Bowen Bridge and saw that same smokestack with water three stories tall on it, you know? And that was going to have parking only on the first floor. I bet the developers saw the same thing and adjusted their return on investment calculation, and probably we won't see housing there. But I think a good question is, why were we encouraging that type of development there? Is that a responsible way to be? When we have CB2, which basically only allows for Wendy's and McDonald's and Chick-fil-A at Merriman Avenue. So I, I think there's a much more comprehensive look to be had, specifically at highly restrictive exclusionary zoning districts like RS2, you know? Why do we have RS2 inside of what is essentially an urban core inside of Buncombe County? You know, the 45 or 48 acres, you know, inside of Buncombe County is probably all more developed and also substantially more resilient than some, than the vast majority of Buncombe County itself. And I think sometimes we don't step back and look at ourselves as an urban core in its totality. Like, you know, Councilwoman Allman was saying is like, is, is CBD really just a few blocks downtown? Or is Asheville City Limits itself kind of CBD to Buncombe County? And to, you know, in a large portion, western North Carolina itself, we make that claim that we're the economic center, but we haven't quite embraced that. Oddly enough, the one place we really did maybe try to embrace it was the river, which may or may not be appropriate.
Good thoughts, other, other topics that we'd like to? We don't know when we're going to meet again, so.
I think another topic, that's a little bit of a can of worms, but we talked about these revisions, you know, we were talking about substantial damage and that trigger 50% value. But there's a lot of buildings still there that, sort of, it's also a form of, you know, if you're creating a business, 50% value, if you bring it up, I mean, does that mean, by allowing exemption or allowing people to, or, you know, to power proper flood regulations? And I, I understand why that's there because we don't want to just make it, because that's, that's a costly upgrade. I don't want to be unequitable and make it so only the super wealthy care, you know, big corporations can't, I understand why it's there, but we are allowing people to build in a risky area with risks. I think it should be relooked at, what kind of use it is.
Is there 50% ours or FEMA's?
Yeah, but it's FEMA's decision, it was, it was, they tried to do a balance. We have the ability, that is a policy, another policy decision, we can go look and make it 40%, once you reach 40%, you're just going to make it 40%. 50%, 50% was just trying to find that right balance.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the dam, I'm talking about if my building's fine, I want to come in and...
Right, just improve it.
Improve it, yeah, it's handicapping the business about improving so much here if they don't want to pay for the flood study, raising, you know, renewing these flood correction measures. Why are we incentivizing people to make the correction?
I'm also going to ask everyone to speak into the microphone, just so it's, it's fine, but, so it's recorded, thank you.
Something I've been thinking about too is, a friend of mine used the metaphor of, we're going to have missing teeth in the corridor? And that image has really stuck with me, is the idea that like, some things are just not going to come back and some are going to stay there. And whether they're damaged or want to improve or not, what is that going to do to the culture and the character? What is that going to do for not, not regulating what is built or not, but like, for breathing life back into a place that we still want people to be, you know? What does that do for the green, in like, other cities, you might have substantial light from various things, but just the idea of like, what does this mean for a district with heart, with missing teeth? So, that's not very explicit for a UEO conversation.
We fill the teeth, but not with buildings.
Right, so, so what is that community?
Land back, you could say land back.
There you go.
Yeah.
And, and so like, what, what planning process comes up with that conversation? I'm not sure what, but it's a special place.
It can, it can be very special and it can be made very special without buildings up there.
Yeah. So what planning helps us kind of envision that?
Yes.
A buyout program. The city needs to be considering what a buyout program would look like if we're going to be increasing the regulations and making it very difficult for a lot of folks to rebuild, then we have to give them another option. And those programs are in place, but it requires a, a lot of buy-in by the city to administer that program, to come up with those funds, to have a, a landholder hold, hold the land. That's something I would really like the city to consider.
To consider, yeah, absolutely. And how does the city interact with land trusts? Because land trusts can be holders of, of bought-back property, you know?
Or indigenous people?
Yeah, there we go.
You could actually give the land back to the people who've had the relationship with it? I mean, in all seriousness too, like, you, you talk about the character of the River Arts District, but, you know, I've not lived here the longest amount of time, but I've been here since 2009, and the River Arts District itself did not actually exist even down South Depot Street very well, let alone across the railroad tracks, over to Highland Brewing, down to Marquis and Foundy. All of that didn't exist. I mean, this is a very, the whole idea of arts in some of these previously derelict buildings is a very new conception that was primarily pushed there by artificial market forces that made it really hard to redevelop inside the CBD where you're going to have to go through finestration regulations that you don't have to go through in the River Arts District, you know? If you have an old tobacco building or automotive building in the River Arts District, you wouldn't have had to go through those same regulatory hurdles. And I think it's important to remember, like, that the time horizon as a community we should look at, it could be important to expand it beyond like, months and years and decades to, you know, what is a real relationship with, with our land look like from an ecological perspective? You know, it isn't sustainable to be sending cars and U-Hauls and everything down the river every time it rains and then just to claim, well, we hadn't seen it since 2004. Well, 2004 is really not that long ago. I mean, some of us in this room may have kids that were alive in 2004, you know? And so taking that time horizon, instead of trying to reclaim what we had six months ago, maybe it is important to say like, well, if we're in a right relationship with the laws of nature and we understand that climate change is a black box. We don't know what the future of weather looks like. We only have past data, and not even like tremendous past data. We have people making claims about thousand-year storms, 30,000-year storms. That data doesn't exist, we don't actually know. And we live on an organism. The earth and our environment has the right to change at its own will without asking us. So to falsely like, march forward, assuming that we're going to make the River Arts District look like it did since 2004. So to falsely like, march forward, assuming that we're going to make the River Arts District look like it did six months ago, that's a huge falsehood.
I want to add to that, that organism, and back to, to what you were saying in the pre-meeting, which, someone mentioned it, about the, these streams, these rivers moving, and how they've, once were here, now they're here. And what we're seeing, you know, because we have a geologist on our staff, is that, no, that river was there before. It carved out, you see alluvium in there. And within these valleys, on a geological scale, the rivers bounce back and forth between, all through the valley. And so to think that these, this is an organism, and to think that these, these rivers are in a finite location is, is folly.
Yeah, I mean, so I was the project manager, literally building the New Belgium Brewery. So, you know, those fermentation tanks are held up by 300 H piles. And what's interesting about an H pile is when you drive it, you find out where bedrock is. And you don't really get taught to kind of conceptualize what's below your feet. But the New Belgium Brewery is essentially a barge sitting on mass swaths of alluvial soil. And when you drive an H pile through it, what you'd find is like, oh wow, this one will go down 20 feet, and you're in bedrock, and that one, literally three feet away, will be driven to 65 feet. What that looks like is a profile under the ground is actually a cliff, you know? Or it could be a boulder from an ancient riverway. Like, you don't necessarily know what it looks like down there, but it is chaos. And, I mean, I think the French Broad is claimed to be by some, the second oldest river in the world, something like this. It's a very old riverway. And so to assume we know much about it, I mean, I don't even assume to know much about somebody who's lived for 80 years and what they've seen. So to think we have a good understanding of that river is, I would disagree.
I think that's a really powerful sentiment, and on, you know, if, if we're ready to draw this to a close, because planners, to paint with a broad brush are sometimes allergic to disorder. You know, it's literally the act of planning is creating order on the, the built environment. And, but that's a good frame of reference, that there is disorder that cannot be planned. And it's something that needs to be a lens through which we, we look at all of our regulation changes in response to this.
I have one more suggestion that I wrote down that I thought of earlier today, if that's okay. You know, so we have, we have super funds. Super funds manage, you know, hazardous waste, right? So we have super fund programs, and what that is, is people who have contributed to something provide into this, anyway. What if we did something similar as hazard mitigation with people who are developing in a floodplain, who could potentially be creating hazards? You know, we have in the text amendment that, you know, one of the purposes or objectives is to minimize public's monies, right, for flooding. So why, why, could, could we consider development of people who are choosing to put themselves at risk or others at risk, pay into some sort of a fund that could help manage the recovery if something were to happen? Almost like a super fund program?
I, I like that because it, it reiterates the point that insurance companies are not in the business of losing money. And the risk assumed through wildfires, floods, earthquakes, landslides, those are distributed across the population. And that's not even just locally isolated. You know, they will locally isolate, but we have seen this all. If anyone in this, you know, room has a home, we've all seen our insurance rates go up significantly. And that's partly in the recognition of climate change and the impact it's having. So I think it would only be responsible to set something up, especially for people who are self-selecting to be in a high risk area.
Or developers who, who, who put something in, get their profit margin and may leave, and they're not the one, assuming any of the rest. It's just a thought.
Open to all creative ideas though.
There've been a lot.
I mean, the state and federal government are asking our opinions a lot about this right now, so yes, we all know the dynamic. We've been watching more lately the last couple weeks, but we should, we should give, we should start, we should start with where we need to go. Backtrack to reality.
Yeah. Well said.
That seems like a great sentiment to conclude on, so we'll leave it there. Thank you all for.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, we have a second, all those in favor, hi. We don't have a next meeting.